This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School.
Welcome everyone. The board has reconvened after our closed session. No action was taken by the board during closed session. We'll start now with our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge allegiance leader today, our student leader, is Kaylee Kay from Metaview. Kaylee Kay was chosen for the honor of leading the pledge at this school board meeting because her teacher, Mrs. Belter, identified Kaylee as an extremely hard worker who always wants to do well. Kaylee consistently stays on task and follows along despite what others may be doing. She also takes the initiative to be on time to school with all her homework completed. Finally, we wanted to share that during her younger years, although extremely bright, she would frequently be frustrated when her peers and others had a difficult time understanding her speech. She has worked extremely hard over the past seven years on her speech skills and is proud of where she is today. I always meet the student leaders and today Kaylee asked me to specifically mention, and I said I was okay with it as someone who's born in Minnesota, that Kaylee likes the Vikings. You can take that up with her at a different time if you have a different opinion. But Kaylee, welcome to come forward. Those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kaylee. The next item tonight is the adoption of tonight's agenda. I would hear a motion to approve tonight's agenda, to adopt tonight's agenda. If you've been seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're doing this adoption. We'll move on to our recognitions for tonight. I will turn it over as always to Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you, Chairman Nordine, board members, student representatives, and executive team and guests tonight. Tonight's recognition focuses on what South National Junior Honor Society has recently accomplished. Donna Leonard and Colleen Morgan lead this group. First, the Junior Honor Society has volunteered at every concert meeting and handing out programs. They have made over fifty cards that were given to multiple area nursing homes, and they have also collected over two hundred pairs of socks to give to homeless shelters. This group seems to enjoy working outside the school building as well. They organized a snow removal team to brush off staff cars when it snows and cleaned up garbage on grounds before the snow fell. We also have a group who have made chains and snow plates to decorate the entryways. Students are volunteering during their success classes, have prepared for strong lessons, helping in classrooms. So far, Ms. Olson has a group and Ms. Duncan has a group helping make gift jars. Another group is helping orchestrate with younger musicians. And every day, students help during sixth grade resource with the Falcon Store while another group collects orders twice a month for seventh, eighth grade staff. Thank you to Ms. Leonard and Ms. Morgan for the leadership of their outstanding students at South Middle. At this time, I'll hand out the certificate and we'll take a quick picture. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is our public forum. However, tonight, we have no members of the public signed up to speak at public forums, so we will move directly on to our regular reports. We'll start as always with our budget development committee and Commissioner Lyons, who is joining us virtually.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Nordine. The Budget Development Committee has not met since the last meeting of the board. We will be meeting on January thirteenth.
Thank you. We'll move on to our legislative liaison, Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, I am working up to meetings in a row, not to have anything to report at this particular time.
All right. Thank you. We'll now move on to then tonight's consent agendas. For both consent agendas, for each consent agenda, the board considers all items with one vote without discussion. The board has either discussed the items at a previous meeting or been provided background information. So with the superintendent's consent agenda, items tonight include Human Resources Employment Report and Head Start Grant Approval. I would hear a motion to approve tonight's superintendent consent agenda. So move.
Second?
Move and seconded with a financial item. Justin, if you could please take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Becca.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine.
Yes.
Commissioner Zer.
When I move on to the board's consent agenda, items on the consent agenda for the board tonight are minutes of closed session, December twentieth, twenty twenty-one, minutes of board meeting, December twentieth, twenty twenty-one, consideration of twenty twenty-two WASP resolutions twenty-two dash zero one through twenty-two dash zero seven, twenty-two dash zero nine, and twenty-two dash ten. I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda. So move. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed?
Aye.
All right, then we'll move on to tonight's monitoring reports. We have two reports tonight. The first is the full report for OE eleven. The board in consideration of its process of how we monitor the district's results has realized in looking over our previous monitoring reports that we are in need of some evolution on how we will accept and vote on monitoring reports going forward. And so we've decided to try tonight something different to help evolve that. It will certainly be a process. All of you in the administration, all of you in the public affairs, talking about this process of new governance model and improving and changing as we go, and it's a learning process for all of us. The only difference, and for Commissioner Lyons, I know you're just hearing this for the first time, the only difference tonight is that we won't be voting to accept and approve the report tonight. It has nothing to do with the report, but our process, we anticipate voting on it in a near future meeting on the consent agenda. But tonight, we will try to capture more fully the discussion that we have as a board on this full report and have that as part of the monitoring report when we accept it, so that the board knows that the summary statement that we've made is also a clear capturing of the points that we brought out, the focus areas for the board and other items. It's our discussion of indicators and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to practice that before I turn it over to Superintendent Johnson and Abby Johnson on OE eleven, that we just aren't expecting to have a vote tonight, but we will have that vote in a future meeting. So Superintendent Johnson, the floor is yours for the presentation of OE eleven.
Thank you. With OE eleven, obviously spent quite a bit of time with Abby Johnson with developing the indicators, going through the, obviously, the summary and the evidence as well. Obviously, Abby can articulate the evidence very well. She's worked with the evidence for quite some time in the district. But with respect to OE eleven, taken as a whole, I would certify that the information is accurate, complete, and that the district is in compliance. First of all, we draw largely from the expectations and the requirements from our external audit, WRS, DPI, the IRS. These are noted quite often in those indicators and in the evidence, as are the district's auditing reports and the results, the procurement manual citations and the budget adoption documentation as well. We publish our financial statements and our boards consistent with accounting principles and auditing standards after the audit review. Those statements and reports are posted for download on our district website. Our payroll schedules are met. Employees are paid accurately in accordance with state and federal timeframes. The evidence shows that as well. All district contracts and purchases of supplies and materials and equipment and contractual services are made based on quality, price, and service. Our district maintains a healthy fund balance, and we're the district's proud of that, between twenty to thirty-three percent, as prescribed by the auditors in our general fund to avoid the need for short-term borrowing. We also follow the guidance requirements from DPI, properly managing our student activity funds. And we've developed guidelines and admin rules for debt management, and it will also be addressed later on this evening in OE twelve. Our procurement functions are quite extensive throughout this document as well and in different indicators. They maximize the purchasing value of our funds in all efforts we utilize to collect funds through the district from any source. And we welcome that that annual external audit of district funds. And I guess finally, you know, we strive to keep all recommendations and suggestions to a minimum. When they are listed, we do follow those and take their suggestions and change accordingly. So that's, I guess, a snapshot of my summary of OE eleven. We'd love to hear from the board as well, and you know, Abby could speak very descriptively about those as well.
Thank you. Comments or questions for OE eleven? Superintendent Johnson, and of course, Commissioner Lyons and Representative Schmitz, you know, when you would like the floor, please just unmute, and I will try to keep an eye on. Thank you. Dr. Johnson?
I was just curious. I guess I can recall the conversation that's developed, but what's the reasoning with the absence of information regarding referendum in OE eleven? It's like, is there even the, I mean, the continuing role for the foreseeable future, the role that referendums play in the financial health of all those school districts? I was just curious as to, I didn't see it as as an indicator or a one. So I, I'm not sure that was, we just couldn't just discuss kind of like the absence of that piece. I mean, is it specific reasoning and or we still did not think it was a good fit for?
Abby, I could share just a couple of what I noticed in examining others. But if you feel free to correct and change, or if you have a different one. Think number one, in the other districts we reviewed, we did not see that, and you think, you know, that's part and parcel maybe could be one reason why. The second reason why is the referendum aren't maybe, you know, and every year counts. That could be just a couple of reasons why we didn't, but probably the main reasons, I did not see those in other monitoring or through other districts. Abby, if you were to go ahead.
Yes, I would agree with you. Mr. Johnson, there was not any referendum information listed in other districts that we looked at, and there wasn't any indicators in ours that prompted us to kind of put in evidence related to the referendum. And you think it's exactly like you said, we've heard on the referendum one time, and then it carries forward. Even though we'll talk a little bit about this tonight, how long does it carry forward for? Is it forever? Is it a limited term? And so I think it could be, yeah, and it's just that we didn't include anything because there wasn't any indicators for us to articulate around.
What I would also add to is that I could see this in a future report as evidence for referendum. Ensuring that information with the community, so on. So I could see that being part of evidence, definitely, throughout the document.
I guess to me, my question, the reason for requiring is if we experience shortfalls or areas of need, the inclusion of a referendum would be one of those avenues that we would utilize in our district to be able to pursue, pursue those. That makes sense, and so that also potentially gives us as a board potentially an opportunity to necessarily reimagine policy indicators moving forward, that maybe that would be something idea of.
So Dr. Johnson, I just want to ask a question. Like, would you envision it as the board putting something in policy that would specifically talk about referendum? I mean, as I look at the policy as we have it, certainly, I think, just in general, referendum would fall under eleven point six, you know, bring any debt obligations before the Board of Education for reviewing it. I mean, that's what a referendum is, is asking the community to let us go into debt in order to advance our needs. So certainly, like, as you said, Superintendent Johnson, I would see, you know, next year, a great indicator there for that particular subpoint would be potentially like a calendar that just highlighting like, these are all the times, you know, one of them was January third, where we discussed the upcoming referendum. You know, and then, you know, but probably ending with, you know, the board vote to approve the referendum going there. So I mean, certainly, like, when we have referendum on the table, that would be something that I think would fall under, yes, we're doing that in six, but I'm wondering if you are, just as you think about it, envisioning it as more of a policy change to outline, I don't know if it's sort of a financial strategy that the board has, and recognizing that, you know, really, the only way to make significant changes, like building buildings, given our funding formula in Wisconsin is through referendum. We don't have a million dollars to add on. So I'm just curious as to what your thoughts are. I will have, we have our policy review coming up next month, but I'm just, for my, sorry.
For me, I think, given the presentation that will be provided to us in the near future tonight, in one of the slides, really, given the current circumstances, both all school districts across Wisconsin, that is a major source. And that's, for me, that's why I would say potentially, potentially recurring, because I would say that, like Nordine, in that eleven six, one would say, if our evidence indicates, so right now, indicator wants that there are no short or long-term financial obligations, what if we're not compliant in subsequently? One of the strategies, the end all approach is to become compliant would be potentially the utilization of whatever. Well, that's, for me, that's kind of that thought. So it may be, it may be a reexamine, remanation of a policy to find how end all are directed to Superintendent Johnson that eleven six, including any data.
So Justin, if you could just specifically highlight that. At one point, I had asked Marissa, you know, as items for potential policy review by the board come up to start a document so that we can get back to those. And we have our first sort of policy work session kind of at least scheduled right now for the middle week of February, whatever our off week is. So that would be something that we could potentially talk about at that point. So thank you for that. Other comments and questions? Dr. Becca?
I'm going to ask something that I think would be part of this new approach that we're taking in OE eleven. And that is in the, in the preamble, there's the reference to all commitment to racial justice and climate justice. Those commitments are not captured in any of the indicators or is spoken. I would say that would, that would be something I would want included in the summary statement about this whole. Is that the correct way for them?
I mean, that sounds reasonable, you know, in terms of having that summary statement that we call great. So you're, I mean, that would be, I'd like one of the areas that you would like to see the board, like, for the board to say, we'd like this to actually, like, we're not seeing it, and we need to see this on a future.
What I thought I remembered, we talked about the racial justice and climate justice were not currently captured. I don't think I see them in the material, but that's a gap.
So an area of something that we want addressed over the next, I hear you correctly. You have other comments or questions you did? Questions there?
No.
All right, seeing no additional comments or questions, we will then hold this to work on our summary. Dr. Becca has indicated we'll use the summary from the question we had tonight as part of our work session next week as we do our board self-evaluation to improve the way that we are operating as a board. So we'll take that, and then the results from that, we'll see this, the approval and acceptance on a future either consent or individual item. This position is at the end of the work session. Again, it's about our work and not about the report. So in that case, then we will move on to tonight's first draft. This is OE eleven asset protection. And once again, this is our opportunity to talk about the way that we're seeing the definitions and the potential indicators before we see the full report with the indicators and evidence in the future. So I'll turn it over to you again, Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you. Once again, much like OE eleven, Brooke and Abby quite a bit on this. Her knowledge of our district financial policies, that series of policies, as well as work with insurance carriers, that's integral to this work. You expect me as superintendent to be responsible for those processes, that they're maintained, they're followed, and govern the appropriate disposal of our personal property and equipment. And furthermore, I know that you expect my staff and me that all investments, investments are in statutorily allowable instruments, separate in district accounts. You also expect for me to ensure that all of our property against loss of hundred percent replacement value and that we're insured against liability claims as well, protections in the form of insurance that has limits to other districts with similar exposure. And also responsibility, I have a responsibility of maintaining records per DPI and legal requirements and follow protocol that maintains the security and privacy when disposing of records. Much like, I think, recently in the last couple of months, there are some terms that we probably, I think we've got about ten or eleven of them, just so that, so that we're clear on those. And basically, nine subheads, but disposing of that surplus equipment, investment of funds, cash handling procedures, and internal controls, establishing a liability management plan, and maintenance of our property and casualty insurance, and ensuring that our personnel who have access to district funds and material amounts are bonded. The procedures of proper accounting and reporting occur for our capital assets and, again, ensuring that the records are private and that they're properly preserved. So I'll take any questions, and Abby is, I know she's more than willing to answer some of those as well. And what we've learned from other districts and what we thought that sets us, that sets our district a little bit apart from others as well.
The floor is open for comments and questions for Superintendent Johnson. So I know at previous meetings I have used OE twelve as an exemplar of one that is hopefully straightforward and in some sense dull, because we should just keep insurance on the district. I will, as I read through, there was just one thing that I wanted to note, and it's in OE twelve point one. None of the indicators, and maybe it's really tied into OE three, our climate commitment, and certainly the disposal of district property and surplus equipment. I think that, at least going forward, we want to have some sort of intentionality, and I don't know if it's something that, like, Justin, you might want to know down in that document, twelve point one, do we need to add in a specific cross-reference to OE three as a board? Or is it just I'd like to see an indicator there that, that the processes that we have, and I'm not certain that we have it now. So I'm not saying when this comes back for its full assessment that I expect there to be an indicator. I might like there to be an indicator, and if it's an acknowledgement that, you know, we don't have this now and we will have it by a certain date, that would, I think, satisfy what I'm thinking about here. But I just think that that piece is missing. I feel like it's something maybe even Representative Logan had talked about, about how do we ensure our disposal methods are are agreement. It just came to mind as I read. So I don't, I don't have any issue with, with anything else that I'm seeing in the quiet comments, but that was one thing that just jumped out to me as I read it, and I think perhaps having an additional indicator there that at least acknowledges that we're doing it in compliance with our climate plan would be, would be helpful. And again, I don't see that there. I'll give you a chance to fair any response if you want. I don't necessarily think it needs a response. It was more a comment, and then I see Commissioner Lyons. I'll have you next.
No, I, before Commissioner Lyons speaks, I think either or, because we've cross-referenced others, for example, OE five and, you know, consider R two and then provide the link. I do remember because Reed spoke about his time working in the technology department as an intern. I do believe it was about recycling of tech materials. So James Martin was here. He spoke about three ways that we dispose, recycle. So it could, it could be either or. It could be adding an indicator, or it could be adding it, adding part of it to indicator one. I mean, I'm fine with whatever, but I think it could cross-reference OE three, that specific indicator.
Commissioner Lyons?
Thank you. One of the, one of the things that's mentioned in the opening paragraph is that we ensure all property against loss at a hundred percent of replacement value. And I guess my question is, is that the case currently? Are we currently doing that? And I guess I could envision a scenario in which it might be fiscally more beneficial to the district to not ensure it a hundred percent of replacement value. So it may be one of our rewrites in the future. If that's not the case, I just was interested in seeing if that's the current scenario.
So I need you to answer that one. So Commissioner Lyons, that was one that we kind of reviewed our insurance policy, and we looked at, what does that mean? And so we have a value on each of the buildings, and one of the things that we talked about is should we be having them at a value more frequently than we are and appraised so that we know we have, you know, enough and at that hundred percent? In reality, we kind of have a net total of all of our property. And so we feel good about the fact that if something were to happen and we needed to replace a building or two, and that we have plenty of insurance coverage, it would take a major disaster to, you know, wipe out all of our buildings since we're located in so many areas of our district boundaries. So I think that's a question that we would ask. We feel that we're insured properly at this point. Can I assure you that it's a hundred percent of replacement value? I cannot. But we do have with the insurance consultants quite frequently to make sure that, you know, obviously, we know property values in our boundaries have been going up, and so do we have enough coverage in the event? You know, if we would have some damage to one building or two, and our policy limits are on the full property, and so if we were to have an issue with a building or two buildings, the full replacement cost would be covered because it's more of a blanket policy.
Thanks, Abby.
Representative Logan. So is my understanding correct that this policy is for catastrophes only, meaning that damage of individual district property isn't covered underneath this policy?
No, it would depend on the situation. So we obviously have a major catastrophe policy, but if we have a fire or if we have smaller things, we are subject to deductible and based upon what needs to be done, there's coverage. So it's not only if a tornado will wipe out a building or things like that. So we evaluate insurance claims that come in and figure out, is it more than our deductible? Is it less than our deductible? Is it something that's covered? And then we work with our insurance company for that.
And am I correct that there is implication of policy in the building as a whole, and for example, the vehicles which it leases?
Correct. There's separate insurance for each of those things. We're welcome.
Seeing no additional comments or questions, we will move on and we'll look for that to come back. Obviously, you have some targets of things that the board is interested in seeing as we get to the full report with the indicators and evidence there. We'll move on to some additional Abby Johnson in our board development site. Obviously, we've been talking about a referendum now for quite a while, and we're doing board referendum one oh one tonight as we prepare to move forward. So I'll turn it over to Abby.
Great. Thank you very much. So because there's so many new wonders of the board. So because there's so many new wonders on the board and some were here for the last referendum and some were not, we decided it would be a good time to kind of just talk and revisit the basics. So first tonight, we wanted to start off with some fun facts about our district. So our district is the eighth largest district in Wisconsin. We currently serve just over eleven thousand students. We have twenty one buildings. When we look at our spending and our revenue limit for the 2021 year, we were ranked two hundred and eighty seven out of four hundred and twenty one districts. And so you can say we're below that state average and below the fiftieth percentile. And that equates to five hundred and seventy four dollars per pupil in that year. The other thing that it's interesting to know is that the revenue cap was set in nineteen ninety three and that still governs much of how our finances are packaged together on a yearly basis for us. So revenue cap, which I'm sure you heard me talk a lot about, is something that was set in the state by nineteen ninety three. Based upon what we were spending at that point in time. So that was the kind of the floor. And then each year they look at how many students do we have, how much state aid? And there's a formula that says, here's your maximum amount of revenue that you can have for your operating budget. And so because in nineteen ninety three, we were a conservative spending district that has carried with us through all of that time. And so if you think about that, we're twenty nine years into the revenue limit, which obviously is not keeping up with inflation and some of those day to day expenses. And so it's a challenge when it comes to the revenue side. And so it also creates challenges if we want to do innovative classrooms and different models for students that might be very different than what they were in nineteen ninety three. So those are the things that we talk a lot about when it comes to the revenue cap and how does that impact our day to day operations? We talk it a lot at budget season about how do we spend a dollar in the Oakley School District? And so I thought that was important to remind all of you that, you know, we have a dollar and of every dollar we spend seventy five cents on salary and benefits. Makes sense because we have staff that need to teach and assist our students. And so that's primarily where our budget is spent. We spend seventeen cents on contracted services. That does include our contracted substitutes, our contracted transportation, any of those things that we rely on another vendor to help us meet the needs of our students. We have a sliver of a penny that is spent for mandated private school costs. That would be transportation to private schools, vouchers for private schools. And we've just recently started breaking that out of our dollar so that within our community and our board is aware of that as well. We spend about four cents on supplies, two cents on insurance debt and other, and about a penny on our capital equipment. So Commissioner Johnson talked about this earlier tonight, that referendum has become the new normal in the state of Wisconsin. So I did a little digging and in April twenty twenty one, there were fifty eight out of the four hundred and twenty one school districts that had questions on the ballot. And of those fifty eight questions, forty three of them passed. And so this has become the new normal for many of schools and to fund, to fund their publics. And to meet the needs of what they want. Some of the districts, you know, when I say fifty eight districts and there was forty three questions, some districts had multiple questions on the ballot. And that's why those don't match up number for number. So why does ECASD need a referendum? Again, our operational costs are outpacing the state imposed revenue limit. We may need to address some deferred maintenance. And then just with our long term facility plans and considering the demo and trans recommendations. If you remember right now, there's a elementary recommendation from the demo and trans committee. There's a high school recommendation for demo and trends. And if you remember, middle school was okay as far as the demo and trends go. So then how do we take on those recommendations? What do we want to move forward with? How can we afford it? How do we get what we want to, in the end goal? So there are really two kinds of referendums. You have an operational referendum or a capital referendum. The operational is really to focus on your day to day costs. Just what do we need to have in order to keep our budget at a balanced budget or a surplus? And then what are the things that, you know, can fit just into that normal budget? A capital referendum is really based upon your buildings and improvements and things that are those bigger ticket items that you don't want to put into your operational budget because then you'd have to pull up funds from elsewhere in order to make that operational budget work. So some more definitions related to referendums. So capital improvements, kind of going back to that capital, is really those big ticket items that you're going to do. It might be roofs, it might be parking lots, adding space on safety and security improvements, just those really big ticket items that you want to do outside of your normal operating budget. Bonds, we associate bonds with buildings, the Vs and the Vs go together. And really you would issue bonds to pay for those really big costs that you have. So we're borrowing money and issuing debt to do that. And then debt service, debt service is the avenue that once debt is issued, that's how we're required to make the payments. And we levy for that service based upon that debt that we've issued. So based upon the two different types of referendum, operational or capital, you can have up to four questions that can fall into there. And so recurring referendum questions means that it's going on and on and on forever. There's never an end date. So if you pass a recurring referendum, that's your community supporting your request forever and ever and ever. It never goes away. Non recurring is for a finite period of time. It could be five years, it could be ten years, it could be thirty years. But there's a, there's a definite time on that non recurring piece. And operational, again, going back is that's to, to help fund and support our day to day operations. There's a non recurring operational with debt issuance. And so that one's newer and more school districts are taking advantage of that. And what that means is it's, it's a referendum for a period of time. But it gives you the authority to levy for debt payments. Doesn't give you the authority to issue the debt with the referendum question. It gives you the authority to pay the debt. That's what ECASD did in twenty sixteen and I'll show you that question in just a moment. And then the other question is strictly a capital question and asking for permission to issue debt from our taxpayers. And so again, very specific words that are involved in each of those. But I wanted you to recognize that there was four different types of questions. So as I said, in November twenty sixteen, this, our referendum was that operating with the debt service piece in there. And so I highlighted to try to help articulate what makes this question different than some of the others. So the five point eight six million, that was the amount of the levy. And that would be something that as we move through this process, that amount would be determined through our conversations and as we're working towards getting that question adopted. It's non recurring because in the green, you can see it says succeeding fourteen years. There's an end date on this referendum. And so it's, that's why it's non recurring because it ends after those fourteen years. And then the pink part is the words. But the key is really looking at that very last part where it says debt service for capital improvement projects. That's where that debt service piece comes in. And so it says debt service to allow us to levy the payments for the debt that would be issued with, in that referendum. Now, the debt issuance was a separate piece. The referendum was passed first and then we had to work towards issuing the bonds and that came to the board separately. And how that works is there's a decision that we want to, you know, once a referendum is passed, then we want to issue debt. We have to petition our community for thirty days and have a public notice to see if they're okay with us issuing the debt or if they want to provide some feedback. And so with this particular referendum, we went through that process and we didn't get any feedback from our community that they opposed the district issuing the debt. And so we issued the debt, we did the deferred maintenance work that we had planned on as far as the referendum goes. And now for the next fourteen years, we'll be making the payments on that debt service. And just to reiterate what I was sharing with you, we summarize every year at budget time, how did we spend that five point eight six million that our community supported us with? And so in twenty sixteen seventeen, the bulk of it was spent on salary and fringes. And that was because our staffing was already in place. And we didn't have class size reduction because that referendum was approved in November. And, you know, the school year had started in September. And we did have a debt payment that year of nine hundred and fifty three thousand. And so each year you can see it's been a little bit different based upon the categories that were in the question that we asked about. And so the estimation for the debt payment was going to be about two point one, two point two million each year to pay off that deferred maintenance debt that we issued to do all of those projects from twenty sixteen. The other thing that's a little bit unusual is the class size reduction. So you don't see any numbers in twenty twenty one or twenty one, twenty two. You'll remember last year we had high brand models for our classrooms. And so we didn't have, we already had small class sizes. We didn't need to make them smaller. And then this year we did some some different things with our staffing and we added the interventionists in those positions. So that's why we can't, we don't have any numbers articulated because we looked at that staffing and it was a bit different. And so but that doesn't mean that next year we won't have something for size reduction. And so we just wanted to make sure that we're transparent with the board and our community as to how are we using that referendum money that we levy each year. The other thing and question that gets asked a lot about when we're working through referendum is how much is this going to impact me and what is this going to do to my taxes? And so I thought it might be helpful just to look at historically since a year before the referendum up until today. And you can see that in twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, the tax levy went up thirty seven cents. When the board chose to adopt the amount of the five point eight six, we were anticipating the mill rate to change by ninety five cents, to go up ninety five cents on every dollar. But there's lots of factors that go into the tax levy. And so one of them, the biggest one is the equalized value. So as property tax values pull up in our taxing area, it has an impact on that mill rate. And so you can see our mill rates gone down. Now, that doesn't mean your taxes on your own personal property have gone down. But in general, when we look at it, the mill rate has gone down because the equalized value is growing as well. And so you can kind of see our tax levy has been, you know, pretty steady for the last couple of years, ranging between fifty seven to sixty one million. So what are the next steps for this twenty twenty two referendum? And so I've been working with budget development committee as to put together an RFP for a survey consulting firm to kind of help us with what should the wording be? What should we be considering? Dollar amounts? So we've been talking about that and we don't have the RFP ready to go yet, but we anticipate in the next month or so that we'll want to send that out. And in twenty sixteen, we utilized an outside firm to survey our voting public to help us figure out what words work well, what, what resonates better, you know, is there one version of the question that sits better and is more likely to be approved than one other? And so it kind of gives us a taste of what is our likely voters? How would they react to that? We also use that heavily to help determine what should the dollar amount be that we want to ask our community. And so I would anticipate based upon our conversations, we would do something similar for this next referendum. And when we talked about timeline, we were talking about the survey happening probably like early spring-ish. So but once we get that part finalized, we'll provide an update as well. The other piece that we are working through right now is we would like to gain some feedback from our stakeholders about what should be considered now. We did a little bit of digging and Michelle Rad, he helped us quite a bit. But we did do kind of a preliminary referendum survey in twenty twenty. And so we did collect some data and some feedback. And so next week at budget development, that's going to be part of our conversation is, do we have enough information here to help us kind of get that? And that survey was really meant to take place of listening sessions. So we have an opportunity to gain feedback from our community and listen to them to say, here's what you should be considering in a referendum or here's what should be on your list. And so we'll talk about that more. We had originally kind of planned on doing another version of the survey, but I think we might be a little bit premature on that. So we'll talk about that next week at budget development and kind of decide our next steps. So our goal was to be able to gain some feedback to share with the board of kind of here's what, here's what people are thinking we should be discussing as we've been talking about referendum. We've spent a lot of time talking about capital projects, not as much on the operational side. And so where does that balance come in and what does it look like? So with that, we'd like to get some feedback from you. And as well as, you know, any questions or discussions that you'd like to have, I'll open it up for questions.
And thank you for the presentation tonight for the foundational information. I speak for myself in saying it's both exciting to see this move forward as we envision what might be the next step for our district. And of course, it's a, it's a big question that I ask from the community. So there's a little trepidation as we move forward. So I'm glad to see that we're getting that survey going and you know, really looking to solidify that understanding of what, what is the community wanting? So other, your comments and questions for Abby? Doctor Johnson.
Okay. Yeah, so I had a couple of questions. So in slide, slide five, we had the forty three passed. And then I found, I found the website, the link that that I have here. Are we ensuring that, so it appears that the questions that did not pass in twenty twenty one cycle overwhelmingly was the issue of debt that did not, that didn't fail. And then second, non recurring. I have, with the process of examining, kind of, was it the, was it the question itself? How, was it the question? Or was it the the climate of the, of the community? Because when you, we looked around, majority of those that passed were, I think, twenty four, either non recurring or recurring that, that passed. And there were, there were another eighteen of debt that passed, but it looked like, if you look at this table on D P I, it appears that there was a cutoff number on how much debt communities were willing to. So and so what, what's the process of going through, going through kind of the questioning and the, and the exposure and ensuring that it aligns with kind of some of the trends that we've seen across the state?
I think that's a really great question. It's really difficult to answer because each community, you know, and school board had to figure out what do, what do we think our community will support and what should we be asking for? So I think that's one of the reasons why I would recommend that we utilize an outside survey company to help us determine some of those things. And I just know from our twenty sixteen, one of the big things that we relied on was assisting with how, how much is the right amount to go through? And I know that they tested like seventy five cents on the mill rate all the way up to a dollar twenty five. And then really what happened is the company came back and said, your likelihood of passing a referendum is, you know, this certain dollar amount. And then the board had a tough decision to decide, do we go with that recommendation? Do we go higher? Do we go lower? And I think part of it comes down to philosophy and what are, what are you trying to accomplish with your referendum? I think, you know, it is interesting to me that so many of them with debt did not pass because usually that's really easy to share with your community. It's easy to go into a building, look at our boilers, look at our chillers, because those are physical tangible things. Where some of the operational is harder to understand unless you're working there or, you know, experiencing that more frequently. So without a lot of knowledge of which ones did and didn't pass, I wouldn't be able to help answer that question very well.
And then if I could, of course, a second question here. So as we're, as we're telling the story, in that in the slide, you have slides by, slides by firms. And then I think a follow up email you've relied to a community member, one of those can be cute. I, I, I really think it's important for us to identify the positives that came out of our last referendum. But also kind of where we contain continuously as a school district are struggling to close the gap where our reliance on the referendum. So it's, it's one of those things where, you know, it's I'm pretty sure that most of the executive members are pretty sick of me saying about the story I do, but I really instead of just sheer numbers, numbers don't make sense to a lot of people. A lot of people think they're boring. I think it's something itself and still for the rest of us, we, we, we want to know kind of, really kind of as the community member that reached out, that they want to talk about positively kind of what we did with the last referendum and then where we can constantly come in that short pieces while we're wanting to do it. And I would hope that we continue to move in this particular direction that we're able to really articulate a story that goes a story that goes beyond a dollar amount. And, you know, and, you know, out of money, you know, I think the one table about the property taxing, you know, I'll I'll always be in favor of referendum for school to sit, but seven or three, you know, that's really, that doesn't even get you a a a good uh uh value meal at college, right? So it's kind of, you know, my family, yeah, you know, so we 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 need that. So it's kind of, can we tell the story of 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 me and being the steward or resources in a way that uh more positives of why you support this than 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 the negative cues anymore. So I I I would just encourage us that we we keep that in the back of our mind. I think for us, a school board member, we need, we need this data, we need this number, and we'll provide it to the community. But I, I think there also has to be a a storytelling side in terms of that particular importance. And then bringing it back to uh the next generation of actually kids that we have coming through through the school just because that's another interesting piece that you talk to uh of older, older, of older residents or those individuals who are in the nestage now, whether or not they're back and forth on supporting the referendum, you know, just think if the same mentality or attitude was present with your your children were going through. So I really think we have to be kind of sort of, thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Johnson. If, if, if we had to decide on slide six, you, you have the operational cost, deferred maintenance, long-term facility. Are all those items uh from a, from a finance perspective, does one supersede the other terms of of importance as you kind of seek out a best decision? So uh 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 in that slide six, so does that, does one kind of, when it talks about operational costs and deferred maintenance or long-term facility, like do we does one supersede the other as it relates to kind of what you would uh expect money to be used for in a referendum?
Um, that's all kind of a loaded question, to be honest.
Abby, can I answer?
Yeah, that would be great.
And I'll throw it back to you, but I I will tell you for for me as a board member, and I know that uh three of us on the board right now, Michelle Clements, Fisher Alliance, myself, all served on demo and trends. And from the minute we got sat on demo and trends, not only were we looking at, you know, district boundaries, we're examining our buildings and looking at how the district has been growing. And so, you know, Abby, you can answer however you would like after this, but I want to say like, well, like, so I think that we would have a little bit of a retrieve in a sense, you know, on a strain in our buildings because of COVID. It's obviously been a difficulty and not something that we wanted. But we saw that one trends come back and say, we, instead of going for three buildings to add on in the, in, you know, with Mans and that'll view and Putnam. We can now think we can, we could do that'll be a putnam, and that would be a more responsible. So I I think coming from a background in Devon, trying to looking at the growth in our district, one of the priorities in this is definitely that capital side of it. Um, because we just have building needs. We need to be able to fit our students in our schools. We need to do updated maintenance on Roosevelt. We need more space at Nor. That's not to say that the operation, I think the operational piece is also extremely critical. And I think one of the things I wasn't on the board in in the run up to the two thousand and sixteen election or the the referendum or even for the year, for the few years after that. I remember the discussion that I heard in a very limited way was around the idea of, you know, is this a referendum that's going to help us survive? Or is it going to really help us thrive? And what I think we got was a survive. And one of the questions that people have asked me now is like, well, didn't we just go to referendum six years ago? And by looking at what I know about funding, it's like, yeah, it's been six years, though. This is our only mechanism to do some of these things. Um, I think the operational piece is really where we start to thrive. And I think that's, you know, so we have a critical need for for buildings as we anticipate Eau Claire growing. But if we're really going to thrive, if we're really going to do the things that the board is asking of the district with our those policies, we also have to do operations uh in that time. So I don't, maybe that's a cop audience that can say that's all important. But I I just, you know, from my perspective, we've been waiting at from basically since two thousand and sixteen on demo and trends. Like, and I think that's about when I started on demo and trends. So like realizing we're going to have to have another referendum because we have buildings. And so that, I think, in my mind, the longest one, but the thrive, the ability to be innovative and to put teachers through that ability to generate their ideas and bring those ideas here comes from operations. So we almost, in my mind, have to do both, and we have to thrive this time. So sorry to run on and, but thank you for indulging me there. Um, but Abby, if there's more that you want to add, please feel free to do so.
Yeah, no, I think that, I think you're absolutely right. I mean, we definitely have some building issues that need to be addressed. And even in two thousand and sixteen, we were talking about some, right? Some major upgrades, right? And, you know, when we were going through the two thousand and eleven referendum, which again, most of you weren't here at that point in time, but there was discussion about, we're going to need to do the same thing to South that we're doing to Delong today, only it's ten years down the road. Well, now we're eleven years down the road, right? So I think that was already, already some of those things were already kind of set in motion and discussed back as we've hit those monumental um spots when we've been going to referendum as far as capital goes. I think operation is definitely a need. I think it's challenging because you have to look at that big picture. And when you talk with community members and um some business people, and they've got good questions. And so I think that there are some questions and some work that we need to do um as administration and as a school board of how, how do we address those operational needs and how do we move so we can thrive? And I think that's always the challenging part because you have people that are kind of looking at how you're operating your business. And, you know, they may agree or disagree. And so lots of those questions come up. And so I think that everybody's got an opinion when it comes to operations, but we need to feel good about that. And there's a couple of things that, you know, we regularly hear questions about, and I'm sure you do as well. And so I think that one of the things would be that we need to talk through those and how are we going to do that going forward? And so I think if we've got that figured out and can articulate those answers, I think that will help us as well. Because the last thing that we want to do is you know, again, I don't know if the board wants to put multiple questions on a ballot. Do you put a capital question and a operational question? Do you mold it together? I mean, there's lots of options, which is really fantastic. Um, but then what happens if it doesn't pass? Then where are you at? Then what are you looking at? So I think we have to be able to look at those big pictures and have a plan for what happens because in twenty, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, we would have a failed operational referendum here. And that created a whole lot of problems because there was a list that was made and it was not intended to be a cut list, but it turned into a cut list. And many of us were here at that point in time and we reaped those benefits for fifteen years, not benefits, by the way, I mean, like, just some of those decisions and things. And so how do you redo that? And you've got more children and things like that. So I think that there's just some things that we need to really solidify and make sure. When I look at us in some areas compared to other school districts, like there are some differences. And so, you know, we've done a little bit of research to try to figure out what's different and what are they doing that's working successfully. And so um, I think that's just part of the work that we need to do on the operational side and some of the conversations that we need to have. So stay tuned. But I do think it's important in order to be able to thrive.
In in light, in light of your response and I think in light of the comments made by you know, David, like, then I guess for me, it it's very important, man, on on slide thirteen uh for the consultant, like the state quarter, a very inclusive group uh that I I I identifies a a you know, a whole spectrum, I think, besides uh uh business community, you know, I think uh 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 retirees that are on 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 tight budgets of uh low, low income. And so if we can ensure that that consultant firm uh really that they're the quote unquote stakeholders with an inclusive group, we're getting feedback from uh multiple sources, I think that would be important.
And I would agree. That's been a lot of our conversation related to budget development and putting that together is that we do want a representative sample of our likely voters, these that will help us make a informed decision.
Can you speak a little bit? You said that the, that the survey that would go out um in the next steps here, that uh that the survey was going to be in place, am I, am I saying that correctly? It would be in place of the listening sessions. Can you say more about that and the reasoning for that? And?
So um, so there's two surveys that we're talking about, and I don't think I did a good job articulating the differences. So, yeah, so thank you for that. Um, so the one survey is really getting that outside kind of, um, like Commissioner Johnson said, of a representative sample of who your voters might be and trying to hit all of those groups. Um, in two thousand and sixteen, um, two thousand and fifteen, actually, there was kind of a, there were some um open listening kind of working sessions, and there were some prompts that were gone through to kind of help give the board and administration some ideas of what should we be considering in a referendum. And so um because of COVID and everything else going on, somehow we still want to gain that feedback because we've been talking a lot about buildings and facilities, like, right? Like, we talked about the elementary recommendation, the high school recommendation, South Roosevelt, all of those things. But we haven't had a lot of conversations about operations, or many, maybe there's some other things that we're missing. And so we were really trying to figure out how can we gain that feedback in an efficient way? I'm also anonymous, so that way then people feel like they can share with us. Um, so what we had kind of envisioned and talked about at our last budget development was what are some broad um questions that we can ask? And then open the survey up, it would be Qualtric survey um that we would um put together ourselves. And so Michelle, um, Radke was willing to help us. Um, Dr. Beak was willing to help us as well to try to get that out there. So we would focus that survey specifically on the community members, our um staff, and then our um families as well, just to give us some feedback and really try to get to what did they think? And so one of the things that we were talking about and discussing was what we don't want us to seem like the questions are already set and that minds are made up on here's what we're going to do in a referendum. So how do we keep it open-ended, but still be able to analyze that data and not take a ton of all of our time to figure that out? And so that's kind of what we were working through. And then Michelle um was able to share with us that um K twelve had done something for us in spring of two thousand and twenty. So we started looking at that a little bit, and we're going to talk some more about that next week. And can we use that information? Um, I think there's some good information there. I think part of the struggle is that was um the first year that we had um, you know, COVID impacts. And so a lot of the information we got was like COVID related, and we went one-to-one devices. So a lot of the themes were things that we've already taken care of. So I think there's valuable information, but is there some stuff that we're missing? And that's kind of, I think, um, Dr. Viger, though, what we were thinking we might talk about um next week to kind of help formalize that. Do you want to add?
To guess, but maybe what is a part of your question also is that in-person function? Your equitable shakeup, you know, like, how do we, how we, is that a mechanism that has to be there?
So I wonder if it would help to talk about, I, again, my guess would be something like you would imagine that's not really been talked about, you know, what you would imagine. So I wonder, and it's not going to come this way. But the different parts of us, and I don't know if it would help to talk about in two thousand and sixteen all of the outlets, if we could just give a snapshot of the volume of due contact that you had. So I think that's what we're
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So um leading to the two thousand and sixteen referendum, we did in two thousand and fifteen have some listening sessions. I think there were three. I don't remember the timeframe, but I know that we had three and we kind of had a facilitator. I did a little presentation about the budget and maybe like, why are we here? And trying to um give some history and some knowledge about why do we need to order referendum? And then there were some prompts to to help educate a little bit and then have some interaction um with community members were there. Then that information was kind of gathered and shared with the board as far as, okay, here's the feedback that we got from the community. Um, here's things that we should be considering. Um, and I think that folded in then to some additional ideas. And then that's where the vendor survey came in a few months after that. Um, that vendor survey was done in May and June of two thousand and sixteen, and that was really to formalize and finalize the type of question, the amount, the wording of the question. And then once that question was set, then we did a ton of, it's a ton of um presentations. We literally had a document that anytime a request would come in for a presentation, it would go on the list. And then myself or Dr. Fertebek, and then usually at least one board member would kind of take the road on the show, I guess, is what you would call it. And we had a, we had a standard presentation that we gave each time. And then we really just answered questions and tried to make connections. And I bet we probably did at least a hundred of them. Um, we did apartment complexes, we did the Ellie Phillips Senior Center. I mean, like, if somebody asked, we went there. We did a presentation with the chamber um in the business community, we might have done something else for the chamber, but it was really an online lesson. That was that was how we spent our time, um, probably mid to end of August until really right up till that November eighth election day. So it, um, yeah, so I think, you know, part of the desire is how do we get some accurate community input to really gather and think about what does the community see our needs as? What do we see our needs as? The other piece that I haven't talked about tonight is that our facility study. Um, I have the draft of it and they're finalizing that. And so, you know, we can use that as a tool as well, because that's got um our staff input as well to help us, you know, what's working well in buildings, what's not working well. And so that might be a piece um of the conversation as far as any facility things that are in reference as well.
With our, what was the, what would the attendance like for the in-person meetings prior to the question being done? But at first, sometimes they are.
Yeah.
Um, or or did, did they feel like in your memory really valuable, like those were really well attended? I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, I know. Um. That's a long time ago, to be honest. Um, I feel like maybe the first one was really well attended and maybe not so much the second and third of that, of that early like two thousand and fifteen one. I think it was a good um practice and it was, you know, like some good prompts. We had an outside facilitator help us with that. Um, so I think the information that was gained was helpful. How much did it get used after that? I honestly don't remember because some things are just kind of crazy ideas that wouldn't necessarily work anyway. So some of it, you just have to take with a grain of salt. Um, so yeah, I I honestly don't remember a ton. I was pretty new to this position at that point in time as well. So a lot of that was a big blur for me. I feel a little bit more confident now because I've been through it. Um, but that was, that was the first year that I started in this role as well. So it was a bit overwhelming.
Yeah. So I guess my, I just have a final comment on this subject. It would just be our, not really a question. But I, I, I think that if we want a representative shake, we have to have a representative like dispersment of our energy. You know, we can't just do one method and then have that, expect that that's going to get us, glean us the whole community. I think if if we want diverse diversity in our responses, we have to have diversity in our force. And so I, I think that, you know, I would encourage us to not box ourselves into virtual only. Um, and and I I get the safety concerns and, you know, I understand where we're at. Um, but I just think the more, more opportunities we can give people to engage, um, you know, even if we entice with some food or some treats or whatever we got to do, but um, you know, helping or make it, helping make it easier, no matter what that is. Um, so I I would just.
I would like to share one idea that we talked about, you know, making sure that we're reaching all of our stakeholders. Um, we had talked about um the BEAs calling our, um, you know, some of our families where that language might not be interpreted really well. Um, we also talked about having um the survey available um like at Mung Association, and then there was another group too. And so we were already strategizing some of that as well as how do we get that full um population to look? I think the other reason why we talked about the survey was time um as well. And and I think there was a bit of safety, but I don't think that was the primary. It was more about the time and trying to gain some of that feedback in a timely manner so that way then we can continue um on this journey together and figure out, you know, what are the things that we haven't talked about that we really should be, and what additional research do we need?
Think another ingredient to this, what I've noticed in this district and other referendum where I've been a part is um the voice of teachers and our staff. And especially if you have a November referendum, um, it was very clear in my past life, uh administrative lives where when you do the same presentations, your staff, because, you know, people in the community don't typically contact the superintendent or an executive team member or even board members, but they'll talk to their fourth grade teacher, especially conferences in October or back to school night or 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 things like that 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 typically occur in the fall. Hey, you know, what do you think? Well, it's about Well, it's about this, 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 and this, and this is what we really need. Um, they're, they're very trusted individuals and the system is very accessible. So I think that's why it was very important where I've worked in the past, where we go to the schools as well. You know, staff meeting gets scheduled for a half an hour and we're presenting, just like we were to the community of specific items and we take those same questions from our staff. So I think that's a, it's a tremendous resource.
Representative Logan and then Representative Bird.
I have two questions, but it's a first one, one long, I won't ask the second one. The first one is in terms of calculating how much money the district receives, assuming a referendum is passed. So the first question is, can a referendum be designed? So based on a thousand dollars of land value, the district will receive a certain amount of funds rather than a variable or rather than simply presenting a dollar value?
Um, no, because it's all based upon the equalized value and it comes back to the revenue limit. So we get a certain amount of state aid. And then the offsetting amount is really in our property taxes. And so when we get more state aid, then our property taxes go down, um, as far as the total amount. And so in order to get that into a flat dollar amount, it would be extremely challenging because that tax levy amount changes every year. And so that's why we always do the low rate when we do the final adopted budget, because now we know here's our final equalized value, here's our final tax levy amount. And so then we can divide it out that way. So in a perfect world, the answer would be yes, um, but it doesn't work quite that way because it's a complicated formula.
You said you have state aid and then you have property taxes. And who determines the relationship between those two?
The state. So on October fifteenth, um, we get certification. Um, so there's a lot of things that go into it, but it's our three-year membership count. And so, which is taken every third Friday in September. And so then that, um, is our membership number. They look at how much money did we get in the previous year revenue limit? Because there's a law that says we can't get less than what we had before. And so there's a formula to calculate that as well. And, um, then there could be, um, other adjustments that come through the revenue limit as well. But basically it's determined every single year based upon the, um, what we had the previous year and the membership. And so I can project what I think it's going to be, but until that final October fifteenth aid certification is in my hands, I can't accurately say what it's going to be.
So my question is, why is state aid not separate from property taxes, especially those taxes levied by the city?
Well, it is separate, but the total makes up what the revenue limit is. And so when the revenue limit, when it comes down to the amount of students and then there's, there's actually a revenue limit per student. And so we have to take that formula, we can't exceed that. And so then, let's just say, let's say it's a hundred million is what our revenue limit is. So if the state says, hey, O'Clair, you qualify for sixty million in state aid, that means our tax levy can't exceed forty million because the maximum amount that we can have between state aid and our property taxes is a, is a hundred million. So that number, that hundred million number is what the final number is determined with that October fifteenth aid certification.
Then when a referendum is passed, how does that factor into that?
Yeah, good question. So then, so for example, if a hundred million was our cap and then our community approves a five million dollar referendum, then our revenue limit would become a hundred and five million. Because that's an about above and beyond what that revenue limit was originally expected to be.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Representative Bird.
So who actually gets to decide where this money goes? Like, um, will, will we be able to give you suggestions and then you make a final decision? Or will we be able to, or you be able to vote on, um, like allocations for a referendum?
Sure, that's a really good question. So typically how it works is we would gather input from board, student, family. Um, and really it's the board's decision to decide how much money. Now, we work together and figure out, okay, how much money do we need total? And then here's the things that we can spend it on. So if we go back to here, um, looking at the twenty sixteen, so these are the categories that were approved in the referendum question of how we can spend the money. But it, it's not going to be the same every year because our needs every year are going to be a little bit different. And so, um, basically what we did in twenty sixteen is we kind of identified all of the needs and we projected them out for the next fifteen years as to what we thought we would need. And then that really helped come back, um, when we had the survey to figure out, okay, so ninety-five cents was the five point eight six million. Um, and so then every year, okay, how are we going to allocate that five point six million among these four items that were figured out? So the debt payment is really easy because we have, we have debt to pay. And so I know for the next fifteen years, how much our principal and interest is on that. So that one's up fixed and we can just kind of take that right off the top. Um, technology, also, we have a pretty good idea. Now, things have changed a little bit with technology over the last couple of years, but we still have, these are the things that were approved in the referendum that we can spend the money on. So that's why those fluctuate a bit because the needs fluctuate in each of those years. And then that is the same thing with the salary infringes and the class size because we've been able to identify here, um, for class size specifically, here's how many teachers we added for class size reduction and that's being funded with referendum dollars. So it's not the same every year and it's hard. But as we're putting together and working through that process, that's kind of where we identify, here's what we believe the needs will be for the period of time. And we did lots of calculations to figure out, you know, what would fit into that dollar amount? And then does that meet our needs as far as covering the debt payment? And then still giving some flexibility with those operational needs?
Um, thank you. I have another question. Um, with this referendum, would it be possible, or I guess would it be practical to, like, raise teacher salaries in a meaningful way over a course of like fourteen to fifteen years? Like even, even by a little bit, because we've been, we've been talking so much about what the, what the best way to support our teachers is, and that seems like the most direct option to me.
Sure, yeah, I mean, that would be something that we would consider and you'd have to figure out what does that look like? And how do we do that? And what does that mean, especially if they're doing it over a period of time? And so that would be something I think that we would want to explore as a team further before we could commit to that. But it's definitely an idea that could, you know, could be discussed and reviewed and things.
Representative Logan.
Couple more questions on the revenue limit.
Okay.
Uh, was the revenue limit initially determined by the state in nineteen thirty-nine?
Nineteen ninety-three.
Nineteen ninety-three. And how is the community able to raise the revenue limits through the referendum? Because is it that any additional funds asked for have to come out of property taxes?
Yes, referendum strictly is, um, would be on the property tax though.
Okay. And would a referendum, the revenue limit be determined on something which tracks with inflation?
Um, not that I'm aware of, because the formula is, so the regular revenue limit formula is based upon, like I said, the, um, aid value and the membership counts, the three-year membership counts. And so referendum wouldn't have inflation adjustments because you vote on a flat dollar amount each year. And so we could levy less than what was approved, but we can't levy more just because of the inflation cost. We'd actually have to go back to the taxpayers and say, okay, now we need five hundred thousand dollars more, whatever that would be. And so when you're going to a referendum, especially if you're going for a long period of time with a non-recurring, you kind of want to make sure that your, your ask covers what you need, um, for a period of time. Because one thing you don't want to do is create a cliff, especially with the non-recurring. When that referendum is done, so remember how I was using a mil, a hundred million to a hundred and five million? That five million goes away if you have a non-recurring. And so then you revert back to the hundred million. And so you have to be strategic as well with your finances and your budget because then all of a sudden you have a five million dollar gap. How do we fill that? And how do we, you know, how do we make good decisions as a board to balance the budget?
Okay, I didn't catch why the, oh, the formula, could the, is it possible to modify how the formula is calculated through a referendum?
No.
No.
It's not, that's all legislative.
By the state. I think you will find many people that would be happy to say that Wisconsin has a poor funding formula for public schools and needs to be changed. So contact your, you know, state senators and your state representatives because they're the ones with the power to actually do something better. We are, there is no way that we can impact the state funding formula outside of asking everybody in our community to help me kick in some more money. And that's not even impacting the funding formula, that's just allowing us to function.
So could the district foresee we create their own funding formula, which is based on the city vote players' taxes that could increase over time based on inflation?
Uh, not the way that it works now. No, because referendum is the district's only way to increase that amount of property taxes. And again, it's that fixed dollar amount that you're asking for. When you go to referendum, you can ask for different amounts each year. But that could be challenging as well because how do you know what's the right amount? Unless you just say, in our base year, we're going to ask for a million and then we're going to ask for a million too. You know what I mean? And built that way. So it's probably possible. I think it just creates a little bit more challenge and then confusion for our community as well.
Okay. Yes. Sorry? For all of me, would it be possible to ask someone who's familiar with legal side, whether it would be possible or practical to play? Because it would be possible to say to the community, we will have a reasonable economic fund. So there's not a need for additional referendums in the near future.
Uh, I think it goes back to some of the narrative aspects and how do you explain that to your community? And I guess it's possible that we could ask that question. But I think, uh, tonight is probably not the night to, to get fully into that discussion, but it's something that we can note and consider, you know, how do we do something potentially novel with a referendum? And if we did, how do we sell that to the community and make them believe in it enough to have fifty percent plus one pass it? Commissioner Clements, we're going to close with you because we are running over on our budget at the time.
Uh, can you go to slide four, the dollars?
Yes, that's fine.
Right, so, um, I think the concern about how do we support our teachers is right there. And our salary and benefits is, is where most of our resources go. Uh, it's really even more than that because a lot of our contracted services are, are that and they touch the substitutes and the hundreds of businesses that do business with the, with the district. Um, so I, so to your question earlier, can we, can we affect pay and compensation? Uh, given my experience with, on, on the, on the school board and in local government, that's really the only way we can make headway greater than inflation is really to do it through referendum. Because otherwise we're, we're relying on growth in our community to exceed inflation. You know, because our, the way that we came, talked about the levy limits, we're, we're limited by the amount of growth, new, new growth in the community. It's very draconian, it doesn't keep up with inflation. Um, and, and the way city government, county governments are the same, kind of on the same wheel. So they're also pinned to that same levy limit. The way that's calculated is different because they don't get as much money from the state as, as school districts do, but, but they're also pinned to that, um, unfortunately. Um, but, you know, that one percent there or one cent, capital and equipment, um, you know, I think that's, that's a challenging thing for any, um, government to, to deal with because, uh, we often don't, don't budget for twenty-five or thirty years in the future when something needs to get replaced, you know, whether it's a boiler, it's a building, it's, you know, replacing the roof. But the way that our levy limit is set up, that any expenditure over a million dollars has to go around for random. So when you're thinking about districts, as many buildings as we do, almost any small thing, like renovation, a, a simple building renovation might require a, a referendum. So, you know, if we want to keep our facilities where our students spend most of their waking hours and where our staff spend probably most of their waking hours, um, you know, we can, we can affect their quality of life in, in other ways besides salary benefits. Not discount that, I think it's really important. Um, but I think, uh, we really need to, to recognize the, the quality of life and the, and their health of people, uh, based upon how the school district decides to spend its money. Uh, and we, we are supposed to be actually available to do that. Uh, the other thing I, I mentioned about, you know, pinning it to other things, so, school, the, or, or school districts in three counties, uh, the city of O'Clair and multiple towns. So, you know, you know, while many of our students probably come from the city of O'Clair and they go on the limit saying it's probably where most of our property value is. Um, we, we, you know, we have taxpayers in many jurisdictions. So, um, they, and they're all making different local decisions that affect property values. So what City of O'Clair is doing may or may not be what other communities in our region are experiencing. So, um, and that's someone who, who, like, my day job is trying to affect the growth and change in, in property values, for example. Um, these things are happening uncoordinated in school districts, often cases. So, uh, the, where, how we, how we communicate with each other, I think is really important because school district doesn't really have any direct control over, or the change in property value or what happens where. Uh, we're kind of reacting, you know, reacting to that and hoping that we're, uh, we're doing so in an important way.
Thank you, Abby, for all the information. Obviously we have a, a lot more, I'm sure, that we'll be discussing over the coming months. So we look forward to the next session. One more item for board action tonight, and that is consideration of the twenty twenty-two WASB resolution twenty-two dash zero eight. Uh, we, at the last meeting, the board had an opportunity to, to mention some that perhaps, uh, we felt that we wanted to discuss further and not have me as the WASB delegate, the, this year's support. Uh, Dr. Johnson mentioned twenty-two dash zero eight, and I think at this time, uh, Justin is trying to bring that up onto the screen. Um, the twenty-two dash zero eight is, involves to allow the WASB executive board to determine its national presence, you know, if you could blow it up and then you get its own weight. In a way that, um, removes them from necessarily being, I think previously it was required to be a part of the National Association of School Boards, it's not, not quite that, but, uh, thank you. Uh, in, in changing the language, you make a national presence. Uh, this is in response to some of the NSBA actions over the course of the year. Uh, Dr. Johnson, I'm going to turn it to you first because you had, uh, mentioned that you'd like to discuss this and you gave us a little preview last time to be thinking about. But I just wondered if you would, um, give us some of the rationale that you're thinking about this one? And, um, also I, I presume you, uh, would like us to not support this particular, um, resolution?
Yeah, well, well, thank you. Hey, for me, it's, uh, as I, as I mentioned during the, uh, the, the last meeting, uh, unfortunately, uh, WASB's, uh, uh, approach to this, uh, uh, of wanting to not be required, and are, uh, pick and choose, uh, national, uh, affiliation representative, representation came out of, uh, political, uh, political pressures of, of alignment, uh, 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 that, uh, would infuriate our kind of political environment at, at our state. And, and for me, that, 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 that is fine if our, what are they called? The Board of Directors of WASB, felt that as an approach. I, I guess for me, my, my reasoning for not supporting this is that, uh, uh, the political environment, uh, uh, changes, uh, 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 from time to time. And, uh, one has to potentially stand on a, a some level of, of, um, of kind of a foundation of what they believe in, you know? And I, I, uh, the reason why, uh, was the language that was utilized in the national level, a, a letter too dramatic for some, maybe. However, the intent of the letter was, uh, asking for assistance to, uh, protect, uh, school board members who are under attack nationally. There was nothing, uh, 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 shouts about that. And so I, I, my, my point is I, I'm bothered that, uh, WASB feels that at, uh, political pressure. And when it's convened, that they can just enter, uh, be a part of something or not. And, uh, I, I would not, uh, I would not support this as, uh, as, as, as a, as a school district, and or if there was, uh, 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 you know, amendment to be made, you're saying, uh, uh, freedom and flexibility should actually be allowed, uh, 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 at the individual board levels who are members of WASB as well. So we should be able to, uh, maintain some, uh, uh, presence or representation with the regional, and our state, or may, it may execute with WASB. If it doesn't align, what's the language, doesn't align, uh, are compatible with our program? What's the language? Doesn't align, uh, are compatible with our program and policies. So for me, I was, I was, I, I, I was a little bit bothered, uh, bothered by this because this is just the one issue. What's the next issue? Uh, uh, and so that's why it would be my, uh, uh, my case that, uh, that just, uh, 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 as a school board, that we cannot support this particular, uh, uh, support this.
The, the objective here is of course to instruct me as the delegate how to vote on these things. So Dr. Johnson, I wonder if you would care to make a motion to instruct Commissioner Nordean to vote no on twenty-two oh eight at the WASB delegate assembly.
I, I would, uh, make a motion that, uh, Commissioner Nordean and Representative O'Clair's school district not support resolution twenty-two oh eight, uh, put forth by WASP.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, we'll open it for discussion on the motion. I will just say, Dr. Johnson, that I agree with you completely, and I will be voting yes on this, this motion. Because I think that, right, that, that, you know, one issue. And saying, well, now we no longer have to be a part of this and we'll just do something else that does not represent Wisconsin school boards at the national level. Seeing no additional comments and questions, I will call the question. The motion is to instruct me to vote against twenty-two oh eight. Or at least that's the spirit of it. Justin, maybe I don't have the exact wording down, but, um, is that? Yeah, I think that's enough. Okay, thank you. Uh, so at this time, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. So I will vote no on twenty-two oh eight. Uh, and, you know, I'll use that as the basis of considering amendments as well. Thank you. Uh, so at this time then we'll move on to our board debrief. Our third member was not able to attend agenda setting at the last meeting, so I've asked Dr. Dika tonight to lead the debrief.
Bill Lyons, this was your night. Want to start us off?
Sure. One of the things that I think, um, went well with the meeting for me personally is, uh, seeing it from this perspective. I, I haven't, um, I haven't been in a, in a virtual, uh, for some time. And it makes me appreciate, uh, how important the in-person is. So I wish I was there with all of you. Um, I, I, I think that it's a good idea also, um, the, the, I, I wasn't a part of the conversations around uh, the voting on, on the operational expectations. But I think I, I understand some of the reasoning without even, uh, having been in the discussion. So I think that's probably good. And that's, that's it for me.
Thank you, Josh.
Well, I think what went really well is, um, Representative Bird, Representative Loken, um, asking some really, I think, good questions, trying to untangle the complicated mess that is funding formulas for, for, um, local government and for school districts in particular. And, uh, it points out just how hard it is for us to, uh, communicate to the public, like, how, how are we funded? And why can't we do X, Y, and Z? Um, unfortunately, not only are, are our hands often tied, uh, but we have a hard time explaining exactly what that is and how, and, and why it matters. And so I think that, that conversation, that, that questioning was really important. Um, and, uh, I think that we sometimes take for granted, um, that and I, and I think there were some other, other questions you could have asked if we kept going in that direction. Um, you know, just how we need to think about how we run our meetings as well. Is that some of the things we talk about, we, we don't, we don't want to take for granted that perhaps most of us know what we're talking about. But the public's like, I don't know, what are they talking about? And so, um, to, to make sure that we're, we're not just having a, a meeting with ourselves, but we're having a meeting, you know, in public. So we need to be cognizant of that. So, but, but I think that, that particular conversation went particularly well tonight.
So, uh, one thing, I'm looking in this direction, so I don't see Dr. Johnson's eyebrows go up when I say that I find very invigorating is, uh, the opportunity for us as a board to continue to work on improving our governance. And, uh, really trying to utilize the power of what we're doing to make sure that our oversight of the district is effective. And I think we, we made a big step in that tonight. Now, or, or what are we going to take from this for our next motion? Going to be what we end up with? No, it's an evolution and that, it's not meant to be, this is the one system and will never change. But that is exciting to me, the ability to then, how do we do this better so that we can really impact the district? I mean, that's why I think, I know that's one thing that, one reason that I ran for this position. And I, I really think that's why the community elects its school board members is to have an impact on our community via the school district. And as we have had, and, you know, as we learn how to do this better. Uh, I think that's a really positive step going forward. And I especially appreciated Dr. B, you know, your questions. I'd say this is something that I want to put, make sure that we have noted in our summary. So then as we go forward and consider it, we'll have that then as we evaluate at the end of next year. These are things that we need to, that we must be looking for. And of course, this one will come up very quickly again, you know, in twenty twenty-three as the regular. So thank you for that specifically. And of course, that's our big challenge because it's easy sometimes to not necessarily to, to know how to get there or to not have the plan or to try to say, well, we have to have everything right before we can take a step. And I think our challenge that, yeah, is how do we, you know, build the flame while we're flying? That's, but we have to do that. And sometimes we have to, you know, undo one of the nuts and put it somewhere else and hope the bolts stay at the same time. So I, I guess that's me for tonight.
Yeah, I, um, you know, I, I think, uh, it was really nice to see, uh, two, uh, OEs that were, uh, 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 links, was that digestible, uh, and, uh, uh, able to, uh, able to get through. But pretty, uh, pretty clean. And, you know, I think for the people who don't necessarily have, uh, backgrounds in, in, in finance with somewhat still the ability to follow is pretty clear. So I, I, I really appreciated that. But, you, you know, this is a, uh, this governance process is a, is an evolving process that I think we're, we're all, uh, uh, familiarizing, uh, ourselves with. And, uh, I will definitely do a better job of actually, uh, increasing the height of my eyebrows of individuals that are actually talking. But, uh, yeah, that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Um, boy, you just took everything I wanted to say. Um, there might be, you know, I, I think I still remain quite curious in our ability to observe or to follow on discovery of model. And I mean, to, to actually have somebody, you know, sit in with us and watch what we do and, and look at our policies, watch our, you know, review processes and, 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 and hear the answer to our questions. Who, who has, has been through it and or we could see board who is ten years into it. Five, you know, seven, eight, ten years into it, um, and, and just observe how they function. I think that that, when that comes up, and anytime that comes up in a conversation, it, it feels very bony to my heart. Like that sounds like something I, I would really benefit from. Um, and I know I've said that before, uh, in the past. But I, I, I continue to want to ask a teacher, you know? And I feel like what, right now we have a textbook, we don't have a teacher. You know what I mean? So it would be, I think, um, an interesting thing that I keep coming back to. Um, especially when we have discussions like we had tonight. Um, yeah, I think that's all I have. I appreciate the comments. I, I have nothing to add. I'm sure it was all quotes.
At this time, I would get our motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.